Yeah.
That's right.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order tonight's East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors meeting. I would ask that you would join me and rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance. And now the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To start off with, we need to amend our agenda for this evening to allow for the consideration of the Lime Spring preliminary plan vesting period and also with regret to accept a board member's resignation. So at this point, I am going to entertain a motion to allow amending the board agenda, to allow consideration of extending the vesting period for the Lime Spring Farm Phase One and Three to the preliminary plan, and then also add Agenda Item F under the Action Items, resignation of a board member.
So moved.
Okay. There's a motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second for Mr. Rubaker. All in favor of amending the agenda for those two items, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries five to zero. Up next, we will have a conditional use hearing for the Lime Spring Farm Revised CU. And at this point, for the conditional use hearing, we will turn things over to our solicitor, Mrs. Pfeiffer.
Okay, thank you. So this is a hearing before the Board of Supervisors under the zoning ordinance for a modification of a conditional use approval that was given back in 2013. The Board will hear the case in a somewhat informal manner. We will have the applicant come forward and present evidence in the form of testimony or exhibits or both. Anyone who will give testimony or who expects to make a statement of any nature for or against the application will be sworn or affirmed prior to making their statement. The testimony this evening is being recorded stenographically, and as such, it's important that only one person speak at a time. When we begin the case, we'll have the applicant come forward and make their presentation and submission of testimony and evidence. When the applicant has completed the presentation of its case, the applicant and its witnesses will be subject to questions from members of the Board of Supervisors, from me as a solicitor, from any person opposing the application, and from anyone in attendance who is interested in the application. Each person offering testimony will be subject to that same process. Although anyone may ask questions of the applicant, people other than the applicant who are interested in the application may consider becoming a party to the case. To be a party to the case means a person must be affected by the application. When all the testimony has been completed, the Board will consider voting upon a decision. The Board must vote upon their decision within 45 days after the completion of the hearing. Before we begin, I will note for the record that notice of tonight's hearing was properly advertised in LNP on October 29th and November 5th, 2025. And I would ask Mrs. Schweitzer to please confirm the date that the property was posted with notice of tonight's ad.
The property was posted on Friday, November 14th.
Okay. And I understand from the applicant, and I will ask the applicant's counsel to confirm on the record for us, that the applicant is waiving any issues related to the timing of the posting of the property. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, we'll turn it over to the applicant to make their presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Peter Wertz. I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Nurk. With me this evening are Eric Scott, on behalf of the applicant, and Kevin Ember from our two associates. Before I begin, I do have some exhibit packets I'd like to pass out that I'll reference during the presentation. Green marked, applicants one through four. Thank you. I'd like to begin by giving a brief chronology of this project and the permitting and approval status of the project. In 2010 and 2011, East Hemphill Township enacted the prior rendition of its zoning ordinance, and as part of that zoning ordinance, it established what was called the Village Overlay District. Exhibit one in your packet contains the regulations from the prior zoning ordinance with respect to the Village Overlay District. On May 1st, 2013, the applicant obtained conditional use approval to develop Lime Spring Farm under the Village Overlay District regulations. The decision established 20 different conditions of approval, and that 2013 conditional use decision is included as Exhibit Two to your packet. On March 13th, 2014, the final subdivision plan for Lime Spring Farm and the final land development plan for Phases One and Two was recorded. Later that year, in 2014, the township enacted a new zoning ordinance that abrogated the Village Overlay District. On July 2nd, 2015, the applicant applied for a modification of its 2013 conditional use decision, and the purpose of that application was to revise Phase Two of the development to provide for duplexes in lieu of single-family dwellings. And this development is comprised of three phases, One, Two, and Three. That application in 2015 was based upon the prior zoning ordinance, in particular, Section 270, 141. D, which states that any site plan presented in support of a conditional use shall become an official part of the record for said conditional use. Approval of any conditional use will also bind the use in accordance with the submitted site plan. Therefore, should a change in the site plan be required as part of the approval of the use, the applicant shall revise the site plan prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. Any subsequent change to the use on the subject property not reflected on the originally approved site plan shall require the obtainment of another conditional use approval. On August 9th, 2015, this Board approved the 2015 conditional use modification application, and the same night approved revised subdivision and land development plan for the project. In April of 2018, the applicant sought an extension to the vesting period for Lime Spring Farms preliminary plan for an additional five years until July 11th, 2023. On May 2nd, 2018, the Board of Supervisors issued a letter granting the requested extension to the vesting period. On February 13th, 2019, the applicant applied for a subsequent modification of the 2013 conditional use decision, and the purpose of that application was to alter the layout and use configuration of Phase Three of the development. Similar to the 2015 modification, the 2019 application and decision were based on the prior zoning ordinance. And on March 20th, 2019, the Board of Supervisors issued its decision approving the modification application request. The present request before this Board is for further modification of the 2013 conditional use decision to incorporate a revised site plan, which is included in your packets as Exhibit Three. We also have, for ease of reference, a rendered version of that site plan, which I believe can be made available on the projector. I do have additionally a handout that I think will make it easier for the Board to reference throughout tonight's hearing. This is not marked, but I would offer it as applicant's five. Again, this is just a rendered version of the proposed conditions site plan that was incorporated into your exhibit packet, additional use plan set, Exhibit Three, which will be a little easier to reference next here. The purpose of the application is to construct three new apartment buildings within Phase One of the development with a total of 54 new multifamily units comprising 35 one-bedroom units and 19 two-bedroom units. Phase One of the site can be evidenced on the bottom left-hand side of the rendered concept plan that was provided, and you'll see arrows to the various new units and the number of unit, new apartment buildings and the number of units to be located within those buildings on that concept plan. So again, in Phase One of the development, the proposal is to construct three new apartment buildings with a total of 54 new multi-fam, multiple-family dwelling units. Also proposed in Phase One is the retrofitting of the existing barn to include 12 apartment units and 2,270 square feet of retail area. In addition to those improvements, there will be some reconfiguration, addition, removal of off-street parking areas, spaces and aisles, and those improvements can be more readily identifiable on the conditional use plan set that was submitted as Exhibit Three. In Phase Three of the development, which is on the top side of the plan, on the right-hand side of that development, you'll see the addition of 12 units within a apartment building comprising four two-bedroom flats and eight three-bedroom duplexes. So that's what's proposed within Phase Three of the development, replacing some previously approved commercial space in that area. In addition to those improvements, there's also some reconfiguration of the off-street parking area and drive aisles incidentals to the portion of Phase Three. So the nature of tonight's request is again to supplement the conditional use decision from 2013 as modified in 2015 and as further modified in 2019 to incorporate the plan set that has been submitted as applicant's Exhibit Three. In addition to that, applicant is requesting a conditional use for modification of the Village Overlay standards pursuant to Section 270, 26S of the prior zoning ordinance to reduce the minimum percentage of non-residential uses in the overall development from 13.5% to between 0.5 to 3.2%. Just for the Board's knowledge, Section 27, 270, 26S of the prior zoning ordinance permits by conditional use approval the modification of design standards applicable to a Village Overlay development. So the overall development itself requires a conditional use, but certain design standards can be modified through a, essentially a sub-conditional use as part of the overall conditional use proceeding. Applicant obtained various modifications of design standards as part of its prior decisions. Finally, in addition to these requests, but separate and apart from this hearing, applicant is requesting the Board grant an extension of the vesting period for the Lime Spring Farm preliminary plan, a retroactive extension of five years, such that the vesting period would expire July 11th, 2028. And as I understand, we'll deal with that particular issue outside of the scope of this hearing. Unless there's any background questions that the Board has in terms of the chronology or nature of the requests, at this point, I would like to have Eric Scott come to testify. Please state your name for the record.
Eric Scott.
And how are you employed?
Senior Vice President with Oak Tree Development Group.
How long have you been employed in that capacity?
Close to 11 years.
Is Lime Spring Properties LP an affiliated entity of Oak Tree?
It is. It's the land-owning entity, and Oak Tree Development Group is the development arm.
Would you agree with the background I relayed to the Board with respect to the permitting of this development?
Yes.
And is it your understanding that the current plan modification request complies with the requirements of the VO District, except for a single modification related to the percentage of non-residential uses?
Yes.
Kevin's testimony will cover the specific improvements. As will be heard, the current plan set proposes additional dwelling units while staying far below the maximum permitted density limitation. Some of these new dwelling units are proposed to displace areas previously designated for commercial use. Could you speak to the reasons behind this decision?
Yes, we're simply adjusting for market demand. We've been marketing parts of this development for commercial use for over a decade without success. So therefore, we're making the adjustment between the commercial slash retail allocation and the residential allocation.
And the maximum will still be far under the maximum permitted density, correct?
Yes.
And we'll actually be bringing the multiple-family dwelling percentage closer to compliance than what it currently is, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Have you read the narrative that was submitted with our application?
Yes.
And except as modified by your testimony, do you adopt the statements made in the narrative?
Yes.
Any questions for this witness specifically?
Perhaps you could go through all of your testimony first, and then we can open it up to questions from the Board.
Absolutely. Next, I'll call Kevin Ember. Please state your name for the record.
Kevin Ember, E-M-B-E-R.
How are you employed?
I'm a project manager and registered landscape architect.
How long have you been employed in that capacity?
I've been with Ratu Associates for seven years and generally in the land development field for over 20 years.
And what are your responsibilities at Ratu?
Generally managing land development entitlements for various commercial, residential, industrial projects.
And have you testified before municipal bodies in the past?
Yeah, probably over 100.
With that, I would offer Mr. Ember as an expert in landscape architecture. Are you familiar with the property as the subject of this application?
Yes, I am.
And does the property constitute portions of Phases One and Three of Lime Spring Farm?
Yes.
I would like you to focus your testimony on the improvements sought in connection with the conditional use modification. Is it your understanding that Exhibit Three in the packets passed out to the Board constitutes the revised conditional use plan for Lime Spring Village?
Yes, it does.
With reference to this plan, before I get into that actually, the rendered concept plan that is currently displayed in the projector, is that reflective of the proposed conditions of the site as shown on the conditional use plan set?
Yeah, it's just a color graphic rendering of the same conditional use plans that were submitted.
So with reference to these plans, could you please describe the proposed improvements?
Can I really point out, so just for reference, Phase One, as mentioned, is at the southwest corner of the property, also known as Quartz at Lime Spring. Phase Two, which is not associated with the revised conditional use, is to the east, and that's the farmstead at Homestead Village. And Phase Three is north of the existing railroad tracks along Marietta Avenue, also known as Lime Spring Farm. So what is proposed, again, just as part of Phase Three, is a revision to the prior approved plan on the eastern portion of the property to basically swap out a 5,000-square-foot commercial building that was previously approved for 12 apartment dwellings of, I believe, two or three-bedroom units. And what is proposed on Phase One is a replacement of some commercial space and commercial parking areas that were previously envisioned for the property with a mix of 64 new apartment units in three separate new buildings, and then 12 of those units would also be part of the existing barn structure, which exists in the center of the property. The retail that that would be proposed would be a portion of that, that barn property, a little over 2,000 square feet. And also, the intent is that one of the existing outbuildings would be maintained as a potential commercial use. The, there are four other existing structures which are currently operating as a single-family residential, and the intent is that those are going to remain, but also as part of the conditional use to give the ability to potentially look at those as commercial uses in the future if a tenant were to arise.
Excuse me, while we have a pause here. The tan on Phase One, does that exist now? You know, they all...
Everything to, all the lighter tan colors are everything that exists as far as existing buildings, apartments, and the same with Phase Three. Everything that exists now is existing townhouses.
All right. Yeah, thank you. I'm looking at Google Maps, and it's not up to date. So, okay. Yeah, all right. Thank you.
Are any changes proposed to Phase Two of this development?
No, nothing's proposed in Phase Two at this time.
An applicant's request is to update the conditional use plan set that was initially approved in 2013 and was subsequently modified in 2015 and 2019, correct?
Yep, that's correct.
In addition, applicant is requesting a conditional use pursuant to Section 270, 26S of the prior zoning ordinance to reduce the minimum percentage of non-residential uses in Lime Spring Farm from 13.5% to between 0.5 and 3.2%, correct?
Yes.
Turning to Exhibit Four in the exhibit packet, is this a chart breaking down site data for the overall project as well as Phase One only and Phase Three only?
Yes, it is.
And this chart was extracted from the written narrative that was submitted with the application, correct?
Correct.
Beginning with the first chart, does this set forth the requirements for the mix of uses and breakdown of dwelling units under the Village Overlay standards?
Yes, it does.
Does it also set forth the currently authorized metrics for the development in the column entitled Prior Approval?
Yes, it does.
And does it show the metrics for the current plan proposal under the column Current Plan?
Yes.
In terms of compliance with the Village Overlay standards, the current plan meets each of these criteria with respect to the mix of uses within the development and the breakdown of dwelling units, except with respect to the non-residential use component of the development, correct?
Correct.
And looking at the requirement in the chart, under the VO District, non-residential uses are to make up between 20 and 35% of the development, correct?
Correct.
And under the prior approval, non-residential use is made up 13.5% of the development, correct?
Yes.
And what's now proposed is to reduce that amount to non-residential uses making up between half a percent and 3.2%, correct?
That's correct.
And there's an asterisk there with respect to that number. I'd like to discuss this briefly. For purposes of the revised conditional use plan in this application, there are buildings acknowledged as Buildings G, I, J, and M in Phase One that are currently considered single-family residential uses, correct?
Correct.
And the applicant would like the ability to maintain those as residential, or if the market allows for it, transition them into a commercial use, correct?
Correct.
And that's why we have a range of between .5 and 3.2 for non-residential, correct?
Yes.
Could you identify those four buildings for the Board?
These are buildings that were associated with the prior farmstead before development. So what is Building J is the building here. Building I is a smaller building to the south of that. Building G is the building to the southeast. And then what was identified as Building M is the structure to the southwest portion of the property.
With respect to the requirement for multiple family, the percentage of multiple-family dwellings provided in the overall development, the VO District requires between 15 and 30%. Is that right?
Yes.
And under the prior approval, that was granted a modification to allow for 7.9%, correct?
Correct.
And the current plan would propose a range of between 10.2 and 10.5%, which is closer to the minimum requirement than what is currently approved, correct?
Correct.
I'd also like to touch on density quickly. The required density for the VO District is six dwelling units per acre maximum, correct?
Correct.
And under the prior approval, the density was authorized at 4.1 dwelling units per acre, correct?
Yes.
Current plan proposes a density of 5.26 dwelling units per acre. Is that right?
That's correct.
Aside from the modification to reduce the total area of non-residential uses in the development, does the proposed modification comply with the requirements of the VO District?
Yes.
Will this modification better serve the intended purposes and goals of the VO District?
Yes, I believe so.
Will this modification result in any adverse impacts to adjoining properties or future inhabitants of Lime Spring Farm?
I don't believe so.
Will the modification result in the development having a density in excess of what is permitted in the VO District?
No, it won't.
Will the modification result in a decrease in the required open space?
No, the open space is intended to remain the same.
Is the modification the minimum necessary to afford relief with the VO District regulations?
Yes, it is.
Did you read the narrative that was submitted with our application?
Yes.
And except as modified by your testimony, do you adopt the statements made in the narrative as though they are your own?
Yes, I do.
That's all I have for this witness, and that would close our witness testimony.
Okay, so does the Board have questions?
Mr. Johnson will start with you, if you have any.
I don't right now, but I'll have to think.
On the townhouses that are in Phase Three, what's the vacancy look like there now? Is there any vacancy? Is there, do you have any idea?
Talking about the Quartz at Lime Spring?
No, I'm talking about in Phase, Phase Three, the EG's townhouses.
Yeah, that's not our development, but from what I understand, those are for-sale townhouses.
Right.
And the last time I spoke with Doug Parkins at EG, they're selling very well.
Selling very well.
Construction is not yet complete.
So there's a real need for, if not townhouses, something close to townhouses in that area?
Yes, we believe there's a pact to me.
And again, I recognize that, you know, when you put forth a master plan in 2013, you're, you know, you don't know what you're gonna find 10 years from now, and that's where we are. So now you're, you're looking at market conditions, which I think is good, and I think it's, it's good for the township and it's good for its residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
For the current plan with the additional multifamily parking, what is the parking situation for those, those units?
I'd have Kevin come retestify to that issue. If you turn to Exhibit Four in your packet... If you turn to exhibit four in your packet, and this is the chart that was included with the written narrative, first chart is the overall project, and this is the way that it's been broken out in the past, so we're trying to mimic that and make it as clear as possible for record-keeping. The second chart is phase one only, and that deals with composition of units, impervious area, things of that nature. If you flip the page, you'll see the phase one only parking computations for what's required versus what is proposed. And I would just have it put on the record. Kevin, is it your understanding that the required parking for phase one would be two hundred and fifty-one spaces, and what is proposed under the current plan is two hundred and fifty-three spaces?
Yes.
And for phase three, for the new multiple multifamily residential area, is it your understanding that the requirement would be twenty-four spaces with the current plan proposing twenty-four spaces?
Yes, that's correct.
I believe that we also factored in the potential for a change of use with flexibility with respect to the commercial residential component that might go either way, the buildings that the four buildings that Kevin previously testified to. So we were cognizant of providing parking that would be compliant.
So what are the total number of spaces compared to the total multifamily units?
So we're we're proposing two spaces per dwelling unit.
Okay.
Which is was a requirement under the prior VO that is exceeding what is typically allowed in the township per current requirements referencing the the ITE standards. And I don't know, Diane, if you have the conditional use full plan, if you could turn to sheet four, it might just be a little helpful to see the blow up of for phase one. We also have a little inset on that plan, so you can see what generally what the the prior plan showed, so. Generally, there there's some new parking areas associated with some of the new apartment buildings proposed. There is some existing parking generally in the southwest corner that is going to be reconfigured to allow for the new building. If you could just scroll to the the left-hand corner, we can just, a little smaller scale, so it might be hard to read, but you can get a sense of what what was the prior proof. So there was significantly more parking when there was more commercial proposed, but because of the the switch to residential, the two spaces per unit, there's not as much standalone parking needed for that area now.
But as it's designed now, and what you're asking for, you're gonna have two parking spaces for each residential unit, so if there's a hundred and twelve units, there will be two hundred and twenty-four parking spaces.
Yeah, there's, I believe it's a hundred eight total units proposed.
For two hundred and sixteen total spaces.
Okay. Thank you, that answers my question, I appreciate it. Mr. Russell, did you have any questions?
I'm just confirming, it sounds like the barn's gonna be remained and just gonna be modified into, it's nice that you're doing that.
Mr. Bubaker, did you have any questions?
Just one question, it might be from Mr. Amber regarding the impervious area. I see it's increasing by six percent approximately in phase one. Is there any any need to update, improve, change stormwater facilities?
Yeah, so in phase one, there is a a slight increase in the impervious, so we will have to look at how to handle that as part of land development process, assuming approval of the conditional use up in phase three. I believe it's actually a slight reduction.
I saw that.
So that should be.
It'll help.
Existing facility.
Right, okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So you provided a lot of information, but like if you could boil it down, I I believe the like the conditional use that you're asking for is like it was commercial buildings, and now you're proposing apartment buildings. I mean, is it is it that simple, essentially?
Great question. I think there's two components. The first is the modification to incorporate the plan set, to make that the certified plan set of the conditional use. And then the second component is that modification to reduce the non-residential component to what's been previously authorized at thirteen and a half percent to what we're proposing, which is that between point five and three point two percent. So that that really is the the two requests on the table boils down to those two things.
Thank you.
Okay, so we can come back to the board if there are other questions, but at this time it would be appropriate to open it up for public comment.
Is there anyone here from the public that would like to make a comment in regards to the conditional use hearing? Yes, sir, could you come up to the microphone and just state your name and address?
And sir, let's have you be sworn in first by the court reporter.
Hi, I I'm Daniel Poole. I live at Lime Spring Village of the EG Salsfoos area above the above the tracks. And I guess my, oh, I'm at twenty-four ninety-two Artisan Way, if you needed the address. My concern more so is with the part three, because that's pertaining to where I live, but is there certain height restrictions that will be involved with that? Also, the parking, I did, I I heard them say two two and three bedroom units, so I was thinking with the two car or two parking space, I just wanted to know how much that would affect the other visitation parking and residential parking that's around the development, because currently a lot of the units, particularly the Mifflin's and the Hershey models, don't have driveways. They're just like entering off the street into the garage, so you do have your garage, but any access parking is on the street, so it just creates a little bit of a cluttered atmosphere and if there's a lot going on. So I just wanted to make sure that that's not going to be too much in from one side going into the whole development there. Yes.
Mr. Poole, did you sign in by chance? If you could, thank you.
Yeah, so the the architecture for that building is still being worked out. Per those zoning ordinance, the the allowable height is forty-five feet, so the intent would be to be less than the forty-five feet allowable. As far as the parking, the ordinance doesn't really distinguish between number of bedrooms in an apartment, so we were just designing per the two spaces per unit requirement, and it stays in that corner of the property, same as the commercial area had before.
Did you understand that? Okay.
Okay.
Do we have any other questions from the audience? Okay.
Okay. Does the applicant have any other presentation you wish to make?
Very, very briefly. Again, noting that the the modification request that's before this board is subject to certain specific standards that are set forth in the prior zoning ordinance, we believe that the testimony bears out compliance with those standards. These are not requests for for a variance or anything like of that nature. It's a modification, more akin to a modification that you would see during the the subdivision and land development process. So we do believe that we do demonstrate legal compliance with those criteria and would respectfully request that the board grant the the requested conditional uses.
Okay, so at this juncture, you gentlemen, we could decide to take a break if you would like for a legal discussion. You could certainly close testimony, render a decision tonight, you could close testimony and render a decision at a future meeting.
Okay, so the first item is, do we want to take a pause and get legal counsel, or are we good?
Good.
Okay, I'm good. So the second question is, do we close the hearing right now and render a decision either tonight or at a future meeting? Or are you guys comfortable if we close the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, so with that, we will close the hearing.
Sure, I would I would do close it, I would take a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, we'll take a motion to close the hearing. It's seven forty-four P M. Motion for Mr. Russell.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bubaker. All those in favor of closing hearing, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero, thank you. Okay, in regards to this, we can either approve this or vote on this.
Right, you have two two actions. One, an action to deal with the request to extend the vesting period for this plan. I would suggest doing that as a first action, and then the second action would be rendering a decision on the conditional use application, which you could do tonight, or again, you could do it at a future meeting.
Okay, so we have that under action item A. And just to make this clear for what our counsel was saying, there's two items here. We amended the agenda, and action item A would be to allow or approve the request to extend the vesting period of the plan until July eleventh, twenty twenty-eight for the Lime Spring Farm preliminary plan. Is there any discussion amongst the board reference to that agenda item?
No.
Any good? Are there any questions from the audience in reference to that agenda item? Essentially, this allows the applicant protection to, if there are any zoning changes in the future, that this falls under the zoning, the original zoning that this plan was approved under. That's what we're talking about here. So again, if there's no questions, then we will entertain a motion. Motion to grant the applicant Lime Spring Farms an extension of the vesting period for preliminary plan thirteen dash fifteen dash PP until July eleventh, twenty twenty-eight. There's a motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
I'm gonna give that to Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Now, gentlemen, in regards to the conditional use hearing, is there a motion to accept the revisions to the previous conditional use hearing for Lime Spring Farms, conditional use involving phase one and phase three as presented in the hearing testimony?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, up next, we have our consent agenda. The consent agenda is very routine items, such as approval of escrow reductions, invoices, and department reports, approval of minutes and so forth. Are there any questions or comments from the board regarding the consent agenda?
Anything, I will be abstaining from item number F.
Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda items A through E as presented?
So moved.
Okay. Motion for Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Is there a motion to accept item F invoices as presented?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Bennett, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second from Mr. Johnson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries four to zero with one abstention, thank you. Up next, we have item B on our action item list, twenty twenty-five County Planning Department memorandum of understanding.
This memorandum of understanding is a routine item that we have each year. It it explains the parameters for representation by the county planning as well as township. We have done a similar one for the Conservation District one or two meetings ago. It just outlines what is expected from each group.
Any questions, comments from the board on this?
Just a comment on the MOU. This MOU doesn't give Lancaster County Planning any additional power to overrule whatever zoning and development that we do in our township, as long as we have a the regulations in place.
Absolutely not, it's a regulate, it's a recommending body.
And it fin, and financially, it costs us nothing.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to adopt the twenty twenty-five LCPC MOU, which defines the working relationship between county planning and the township?
So moved.
Okay, motion for Mr. Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bubaker, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero, thank you.
Should this MOU be two thousand twenty-six?
Mrs. Schweitzer, is this the two thousand twenty-six MOU, or is it the two thousand twenty-five MOU?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
All right.
So we probably should clean that up and just amend that motion. So can we amend that motion to adopt the twenty twenty-six LCPC MOU, which which defines the working relationship? Okay. So we're gonna amend that for Mr. Bennett.
Second.
Second for Mr. Bubaker, so that we're stating that this is the twenty twenty-six LCPC MOU. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you, it's a good catch. Okay. Up next, vacancy on the zoning hearing board, Mrs. Schweitzer.
Yeah, I just realized that to appoint someone to the vacancy of a zoning hearing board, you need a resolution, which I did not provide to you. But however, Mr. Caudus, Daniel Caudus is here, if you could stand up, please. He is currently a member of the Planning Commission, he has been so for several years. He is an employee of DMA. I don't know his exact title or his expertise. There you go. He has expressed interest in serving on the zoning hearing board to fill a vacancy. So if we do move forward with the nomination, I would ask either to do it with adopting a resolution, which you have not seen, but it simply gives him this power, or wait till next month or next meeting, and I can have the resolution prepared for you.
Okay. What's your pleasure?
We we have him here in the audience. That's a nice job something tonight.
Okay. Okay.
So you'd be adopting a resolution to appoint?
What would the resolution number be? Do you have an idea?
Twenty-five, twenty-eight.
Thank you.
All right. Yes.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt resolution twenty twenty-five, twenty-eight, appointing Mr. Daniel Caudus to fill a vacancy in our zoning hearing board for a term until January twenty- appointing Mr. Daniel Caldis to fill a vacancy in our zoning hearing board for a term until January twenty thirty.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, so the motion is from Mr. Russell, second from Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Welcome aboard and thank you for being willing to serve.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan.
Now that you've accomplished that too, I did want to add that this is, comes with the full endorsement of the zoning hearing board.
Okay, great. Okay, up next, we have the community contribution recommendations from the finance group. Mrs. Schweitzer.
So we have a new policy several months old that we have asked the nonprofits that we give contributions to, to provide us with documentation that shows that they are in fact nonprofits and how they would be using the funds that are beginning to the township or come from the township. We identified five places, Roarstown Fire, Hemphill Fire Department, Amos Her Foundation, Hemphill Area Rec Commission, and the Lancaster County Lib, Lancaster Public Library. And as you can see from the agenda, you see that the amounts that have been requested. They are basically typical of what we have been doing in past years, with the exception of the Hemphill Rec Commission, which there's an additional supplemental support for capital work that they are planning on doing. All of these items are currently in the proposed budget.
Are there any question or comments from the board on this?
Objections?
I have none.
Uh, no.
All the, all the entities complied with our new rules that we were requiring on the transparency and also about making sure that they're being used in appropriate manners. So they complied with those requirements.
Are there any questions or comments from the audience on this? Any from Zoom? Okay. Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation of the finance group to provide funding to the following groups: Worst Hound Fire Company, the two thousand twenty-six ongoing operational support, Hemphill Fire Department, the two thousand twenty-six ongoing operational support, the Amos Her Foundation, ten thousand dollar twenty twenty-six request, the Hemphill Area Rec Commission, based upon the support agreement of fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars, and a two thousand twenty-six supplemental support of twelve thousand. The Lancaster County, excuse me, Lancaster Public Library, twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty for the twenty twenty-five contribution based on a one dollar per capita twenty twenty census, and the twenty-six thousand three hundred and fifty twenty twenty-six contribution based on the one dollar per capita census, with the added stipulations that all the funding needs to be used for the Mountville, Mountville branch. And before the twenty twenty-six funding is distributed and accounting will be required to show that the twenty-five funding was used to support the Mountville branch.
So moved.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bennett. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Up next, we have the C M I, C M High twenty twenty-six contract for the traffic signal maintenance.
This is an annual maintenance request for C M High that we have them maintain all our traffic signals. They have been with us for many, many years, and it's simply a contract that guarantees us that they will maintain our traffic signals with routine maintenance.
Any questions or comments on this item?
None.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Zoom. Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-six contract with C M High for traffic signal maintenance?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brew Baker. All of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. Okay, up next, under action items, item number F, we have the resignation of a board member. Mrs. Schweitzer.
I would turn it over to the board member that's resigning, as I have no information.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to formally tender my resignation from the Board of Supervisors effective Wednesday, November nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, due to personal reasons. It has been an honor to serve on the board over the past sixteen years, and I greatly value the experiences and relationships I have developed during this time. East Hemphill Township provides an exceptional environment for both work and family life, and I'm confident that the future boards will continue to uphold the achievements of the predecessors while advocating for the community's progress. So I wanted to thank everybody for my time on the board, and this will be my last time in this seat.
Well, I got to say it's sad and with regrets. You've served the township very well over the years, and your expertise and experience will be missed.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I I'd like to express, you know, my, not the, not disappointment, I know you had good reasons, but my, my feelings that I know I'm going to miss you here in that I just always had a level of comfort when something came up that was beyond my understanding. It wasn't beyond Scott Russell's understanding, so I always appreciated your willingness to share your expertise with me every time I asked, and hope, and hopefully that will continue in the future. So thank you very much, and I'll wrap that up right now.
Thank you.
That's a wonderful comment, I think, about Scott, and that's, you know, for myself, I appreciate the valuable contribution that you've made to the township over the, over the years while I've been a resident here and even before my time on the, on the board. We wouldn't be where we are, and we wouldn't have the great place to work, live, and raise a family if not for many, in many ways, you wouldn't have been here. You've guided the township, I believe, in a great manner, and thank you doesn't seem enough, but greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd just like to echo what's been said. In addition, just, you know, just thank you for your, for your expertise and integrity. I've known you before, my time serving here certainly, and just always appreciated your, your, you know, willingness to come forward and, and deal with the issues and, and in a professional and caring way, and how much you care about this township and, and the residents that live here, so I just really appreciate your service for the length of time. That's, that's quite, quite an accomplishment, quite a commitment for serving that period of time, so just thank you for that.
Thank you.
So with that, is there a motion to accept the resignation of Scott Russell from the Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors, effective November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second for Mr. Brew Baker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And of course abstain.
Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. This does now trigger the, there is a prescribed method in replacing a vacancy on the board, which will start today, and must be done within thirty days. So we would be looking at doing this at our meeting in December, our, our second meeting in December. Ms., Mrs. Schweitzer, I believe the last time that we did this, we put out
We solicited for, for resumes.
Right. So it would be my recommendation that we do that again. We submit for resumes and select a cutoff date. And then the board members, if they choose to contact the applicants, they can do so on their own, interview them. And that we would be prepared to make a decision on who we appoint on the November, is it November seventeenth?
Correct.
I'm sorry, December seventeenth, meaning what date do you think is a practical date to?
I would suggest that you give a seminal deadline by December third, which is your next board meeting, which gives you about two weeks then for the board to contact the possible applicants.
Is everybody okay with that timeline, December third?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett?
So our meeting is in December is the seventeenth?
Yes. We have two meetings at the
The one where we would take action on a new board member would be the seventeenth?
That would be the latest, yes.
Right. We could take action on the, on the third?
Well, we could. We would have to expedite the resumes and I think, I think in fairness to everybody, we'd just keep it like we did last time and make the decision on the seventeenth.
Okay.
Just not be rushed. I'm, I'm good with the third as a deadline. We have Thanksgiving coming up. It's going to be good. So do, I believe we need to make that a motion? Do we need to make the?
It probably wouldn't hurt. That way it's on the books. I don't know if we did the last time, but
Okay. So a motion. Is there a motion to outline the timeline for accepting resumes to fill the vacancy on the East Hemphill Township Board of Supervisors as December third?
Five, five P M.
At five P M.
So moved.
Okay. So there's a motion by Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Mr. Brew Baker. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to zero with one abstention. Okay, so we will set the deadline for applications December third, and then we will vote on filling the position on December seventeenth. Okay, all right. Old business, twenty twenty-six proposed budget. Is there any continued discussion from the board? The last time we met, what we were looking at was a millage rate a point, or one point five one, which can be broken down into three sections, point eight mils for the general fund, point five five mils for fire service, and capital reserve, point one six mils. Is there any comments or questions, any more discussion on, on that item?
Just the budget is a reflection of the fact that our fire costs have grown up exponentially, as well as our public safety expenses in general. And this, this is a unprecedented new expenses that are being faced by the township as we start having to pay for part-time drivers and are going slowly to full-time fire departments.
Yes, and may I make a, an observation? For the proposed budget, it appears that our expenditures are like almost three million higher than our revenues. However, I've come to the conclusion that a big reason for that is the, the payment for the Centerville project is due in twenty twenty-six, whereas the funding came years earlier. So if you took that one-time line item out, it would be a balanced budget. So I just wanted to make sure the community knew that, like, we weren't planning to continue with a, a three million dollar deficit, but it was a one-time charge. Is that fair to say? How I characterize that?
The reason for the discrepancy this year is currently that reason, yes, for Centerville Road.
Okay.
But we have been carrying a deficit for at least a few years.
And the revenue number that I see here, the twenty-four million, two forty-nine, that, that will reflect or does reflect the, the new millage?
It does.
It does.
Those numbers comes right, the twenty twenty-six numbers come right from your proposed budget.
Yes, and we have been carrying a deficit. However, hopefully, the half millage increase would have reduced that deficit
Right.
this year, if we didn't have that one-time Centerville charge. So I'm, point being, hopefully next year, it'll be, we'll be close to not running a deficit, I believe. Hard to predict, but
It really depends upon how much draw you have on your capital reserve, because that's what we plan. We build it up and then draw down as projects are completed. So.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, unfortunately.
David Hughes, eight five four, Huntington Place. How about the bear in the room? Mention of Penn State doing a capitation charge for their handling the community's EMS service. I don't see anything on the budget about that.
Can you be more specific? What are you referring to?
They're saying that they're going to charge the township, this is what was discussed earlier, that they would charge the township a capitation fee. In other words, a fee for every, every person in the township.
So we do, I mean, we do have the opportunity to bid out EMS, EMS service. We can put out an R F P for it. We're not locked into anything, so at this point, I, I don't know that it's fair to say that that should be a budgeted item.
Okay.
Does that mean, does that make?
Here's the EMS service that's available though, because they bought a good portion of all the EMS in the, in the county.
So there's two right now, I think we have, in the county, two, two of the bigger ones?
Yeah, there, there are multiple EMS organizations. The, the contract that we have with Lifeline EMS doesn't expire until July. And while there have been discussions about a per capita fee, nothing's in writing and nothing has been determined, and there are discussions that have to occur. So I would expect that they appreciate that we house their hospital here and that we are one of their largest service areas, and I expect that those conversations will end in a positive manner, that hopefully will not have a budgetary impact, at least for several years.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Any from Zoom? Okay. Next, new business? Do we have any new business? Okay. There was no traffic commission. Report Traffic Commission will take place at the December seventeenth. meeting. Public comment for anything that was non-agenda related? Do we have any public comment tonight? Any from Zoom? Okay. Mrs. White, sir, do we need to approve the budget tonight? Does that need to be a motion?
No, it's been advertised for December seventeenth.
Okay. The next item up, managers' report.
So you noticed that there's a significant lack of information regarding Centerville Road because the project is done. Top of the list now is Dairy Road Bridge Project, which is well underway. We're down to one lane traffic on that roadway. It's minimal traffic, but it will be extended probably to it for another fourteen weeks till that project is completed. The Noldora Park is open for business. As I understand, on one Saturday, there was at least twenty-five cars entertaining themselves at the park, so that's great news. We do have significant plantings that will be occurring in the spring to green that up, as well as trees and shrubs. So we're not totally finished, and at that point in time, we'll probably have a dedication ceremony. The Indian Springs Park project, as you recall, we hired GSL Consulting to apply for a R cap grant for three million dollars, and there was a match involved. We have since decided, given the budgetary constraints, that that application has been withdrawn from the state. So that project now still on our books, but will be done parsed out into smaller project, manageable project initiatives, where funding is available, as we have done with our other parks. Mr. Garringer, the alternate for the zoning hearing board did send a letter to us, and he is no longer, is just interested in being the alternate. So that will have to be dealt with come the beginning of the year, and what the board would like to do regarding the alternates for the zoning hearing board. You did get a copy of the County Act one sixty-seven plan frequently asked questions. That was a discussion point at the LCATS convention in early November. I was advised that tonight that there is a chambers meeting for the appeal filed by the Dorsey Road neighbors, so that's moving forward through the court system. And I believe the sinkhole on Nestle Road Basin has been repaired once again, a different one, but repaired. About all of my reports, unless there are questions.
Was the Nestle Road Basin designed to infiltrate?
Was the Nestle Road Basin?
Designed to infiltrate.
Yes, it is holding water. They have to put in a valve, and they have to draw down the water or somehow manage to get that valve in. That's been a bit delayed. I don't believe it's been installed. Oh, Mr. Callis, that's right.
Project managers in the room.
The project matter for the Nestle Road Basin is here, if you have any questions for.
It's not a clay line. It's a, but the concern is with it being impervious, and we are pervious in infiltrating, and we're getting sinkholes. There's just, there's a concern there, because it's designed to infiltrate water into the area that now is displaying, giving a display of potentially creating some extra detention, the detention basin.
Mr. Callis, could I put you on the spot?
Can you come up to the microphone for the people on Zoom? Thank you, Dan.
I didn't mean to do that to you, Dan.
Yes, the basin was intended to be an infiltration basin, however, during the construction phase, the contractor didn't yet put in the plantings, so it didn't give the chance for the plantings to establish in order to promote the infiltration in the basin. So, and unfortunately, we tried to de-water the basin, but it, a lot of water flooded out the fairway just downstream. So we had to hold off on de-watering it in order to properly put those plantings in.
Were you going to put a base drain at the bottom or something like that?
Yeah, that was the intent, to put in a base drain to help assist in de-watering it.
Do we think those sinkholes are limited, or is that going to be something where we're going to have to make it a dry basin at this point?
The latest sinkhole was actually outside of the basin, above it. So that was, that one was, you know, a little mind-scratcher there. But we did experience some sinkholes inside the basin, and after many attempts of repairing those, we actually filled in, like, we just, like, filled in a part of that basin, so no more sinkholes have occurred after that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mrs. White, the only thing I would add to maybe the manager's report is we did have an executive session.
Yes, sorry, I did have that noted. We had an executive session to discuss legal matters and personnel matters from six-thirty this evening until seven.
Question on the report. The planning commission with Mr. Caldis moving on, there's three alternates right now. Is that an active process to find out which alternates are interested?
Yes, the planning commission has moved from seven to five, and the alternates from three to two. So what we have typically done in the past is contact the chairman and ask him who he would recommend moving up, and then making that change.
Okay, so that's in process?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure we didn't have to do anything.
Not at this point, no. You would have to make that appointment at some point.
And one more question about the advertising for the open supervisor's position. Is that just like a website thing, or does that go in the newspaper, or word of mouth, or kind of?
Last time we did not advertise. We can, I don't believe. There's a cost involved to advertising, of course. We usually put it on Nextdoor, Facebook, and our website. But we can advertise if you like.
I doubt that. I think last time we ended up with four quality applicants. I think we're going to be fine if we do it the way we did last time. If we just put it on the website, put it on social media, I think we'll do just fine.
There's no, just I'll jump in, even though I have no say in it at this point, but there's no legal requirement for advertising an appointment like that. It's the township's going beyond by even asking for resumes.
I do see Mr. Madonna has shown himself, and I know why. So on the back of your agenda, I do have a discussion about the budget, and the last online line item, I am, was asking for clarification regarding the public works hiring. We have thirteen members currently. We're budgeted for fourteen. It's basically a vacancy. And I know there's been discussion regarding how we want to handle that hiring, if we wanted to postpone it, or what we would like to do with winter season coming in. We always need plow drivers. So I don't know if you're ready to make that decision, or if you want to still mull it over. And then the other thing is the ordering of the street sweeper for twenty twenty-seven. It's something that has to be ordered twelve months in advance. And the proposal would be for a lease, and your long-range projections in the proposed budget does indicate a lease for that sweeper.
I thought we addressed these already, but maybe.
I guess it's just really clarification that I need. I wasn't sure if I left the public works hiring.
I thought we, I thought just the opposite. Maybe we didn't.
I guess the comment that I would make on this is, is there a way to perhaps hire someone part-time without benefits? Rather than bring them in as a full-time employee to save some costs, at least initially?
We have not had very good luck. I think Mr. Madonna can attest to that in hiring part-time people, particularly with CDLs.
We have had, in the past, we actually advertised this a couple of years ago and had our message board out front, and at that time, we had a couple of people inquire, but they showed no interest. It's kind of tough when it's unpredictable, number one, as to how much they would actually be used. And again, some of the people, you know, they could drive a pickup truck, but, you know, they've never driven, you know, the large dump trucks. And we've had the message board out, I think, for, I think it was two weeks, and we did not, I think we had one or two inquiries, but again, no, no firm commitment that they would be interested in that. I kind of think at some point there, there might have been a misconception as to the number of employees that we keep and why we keep them, and, you know, I think there were some thoughts there that, oh, we just keep that many employees just for plowing snow, but really, that's not the case. It's far from it. We do so much else in the township that requires, you know, a certain amount of people. In the fourteen people, one of our guys is a mechanic, which, you know, he doesn't go out and do the regular pothole patching, and then our building maintenance guy is also included in that, which, again, he doesn't go out patching potholes and park work and that sort of thing. So when we do work on busy roads, it requires two flaggers. So that leaves us four other people to be shoveling tons and tons of blacktop and rolling it and that sort of thing. So we also have daily park work of emptying trash. So if you look at some of the other townships and the amount of employees, you know, that they have, you know, we're on the low end, I believe, but, yeah, we just don't keep people just for snow plowing only. You know, we save hundreds of thousands of dollars by the work that we do, as opposed to bidding it out or paying somebody else to do it. So this winter alone, we will have two people that will be out on sick or, you know, injured type thing. So I'm down two people for this winter anyway. Finding people, you know, subcontractors to plow is getting harder and harder also, you know, simply because of the unpredictable.
Mr. Madonna, we're good. Let's, I mean, I think,
Sorry.
My recollection from the budget meeting was that we decided to keep this position, and it was my understanding that there was going to be filled. In addition, the street sweeper, we did not take that out of the budget, so unless we're going to change that now and take it out.
Perry, have you gotten pressure regarding submitting the order, or could we wait until the seventeenth?
He has questioned me, you know, because I told him we were looking at the budget in October and early November. I just had questions on it. Again, if it's not ordered soon, it will be into twenty twenty-seven till it would be delivered. So again, it's, you know, just, it's a matter of timing. I don't know if we would order it, say, this week, it may show up towards the end of next year, but wouldn't have to pay for it until, like, twenty-seven. First payment would probably be January of twenty-seven. We don't pay for it when we order it, no. It's, that's something that, once the lease comes up, it's usually the following January.
Be good with.
Not sure if you guys had read my memo that I sent to the board also regarding some of the numbers.
Mrs. White, it's in the budget. This is under your purview, in my view, at this point, when it gets ordered.
Well, at this point, we don't have a budget. So I would prefer if we adopted the budget first and then placed the order.
Okay, and that's how we will proceed then.
And that would allow the public to comment as well. I mean, this is the first opportunity. I'd feel a bit more comfortable if it was a third, and there still was no comments regarding.
Very good. That's the way.
But it's nice to know that the consensus is that you would support it.
Yes.
Okay, and Perry can tell them that.
All right.
Thank you very much.
You want to, Perry?
Nope, that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do we have anything else for the good of the order tonight? Okay, hearing none, we will adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-seven. Thank you.